Evening, welcome to the council meeting October first, twenty twenty four is called order. Anyone in the audience that app Find headphones, please raise your hand and we'll bring those to you. I'm not seeing any. Let's write some pledge, please.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Amen.
Donna, can you do a roll call, please?
I will. Councilmember Blush. Councilmember Sterns. Councilmember Gilmore. Mary Nesko.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Sherman.
Here.
Councilmember Saath.
Here.
And Councilmember Gutierrez.
There. Thank you, Donna. Council have any late changes to the agenda? City manager?
No changes, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Council have any board reports to share?
Yes, I do. On September twenty fifth, I attended the Housing and Behavioral Health Advisory Board meeting. And there was some discussion around House Bill fifteen ninety. They're requesting that we discuss maybe enacting that, have a discussion about this.
I think we're familiar with fifteen ninety. We talked about it in the past. It's a one tenth of one percent sales tax for housing.
Yeah, multiple measures for affordable housing. Absolutely. Yeah, we've talked a little bit about it in some of our budget presentations and it's timely. Councilmember Sap, I intended on bringing that forward next week at the study session to at least give the council kind of a first blush at the, you know, at some of the facts regarding the the measure and what the opportunities are for council, how it could be utilized and for, I guess, further direction on how you'd like staff to proceed.
Sounds good. Right. Anyone else? All right. Are we ready for reading the consent agenda?
Yes.
All right. Donna, will you please read the consent agenda?
I will. Vouchers numbered one, 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 five, six, four through one, 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 six, one, eight. And E F T payment numbers six, six, two through six, eight, five. And the total amount of three hundred and ninety seven thousand, three hundred and three dollars and eighteen cents. We have one resolution, resolution number one, three, four, nine dash zero, nine, two, four. A resolution of the Council of the City of Shelton, Washington, accepting the Civic Center exterior project as final and complete.
Thank you, Donna. Is your motion approved? The consent agenda is read?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda as read.
All right, we have a motion to second to approve the consent agenda as read. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Vote. That motion carries. All right. The council invites the public to make comments on matters of city business. Comments shall be made to the entire council, not individual council members. Please refrain from any personal or disrespectful remarks that create disruption of the meeting. If unreasonable disruptive conduct continues, you'll be asked to leave the meeting. Donna, have you got anyone signed up public comment?
Yes, we do, Mr. Mayor. Our first speaker is Kathy McDowell.
Evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor and Council. Um. I love what they're doing with Coda, making it our district street. But excuse my French, I hate the striping and the way they, what do you call it, direct, direct traffic. I know it's supposed to slow down traffic, but at night you can't see the stripes, can't see the, so that would probably be a good thing to redo that and make it brighter. But I'm a little dismayed that it came out like that. And I'm just hoping that nobody, people are parking on the wrong side of the street now, and it's making it hard for us to go up and down that street if we go up and down that street. So just want to mention that I think that I've talked to some other people and they're a little dismayed with it also. But at least if the stripes could be brighter at night. Um, they're hard to see at night. And that would be a start. Thanks.
Thank you, Kathy.
Hey, next we have Susan Kirchhoff.
Good evening, council members, mayor, city officials. My name is Susan Kirchhoff. I'm the founder of the Youth Connection. Um, as you know, we have drop-in centers both here and in Belfair, and we service young people from the ages of twelve to twenty four. It's interesting that you brought up House Bill fifteen, whatever that one there. Um, I know the tax money is coming. Um, one of the things that I wanted to point out from our, our vision and us, um, is to completely provide a safe place, um, that's inclusive of everyone in that age bracket that we serve. Um, on a single night in twenty twenty three, there was over thirty four thousand, seven hundred and three unaccompanied youth counted as homeless. Between twenty twenty two and twenty twenty three, the number of unaccompanied youth increased by fifteen percent. These estimated, estimates include, indicate approximately one in ten young people, the ages of eighteen to twenty four will be homeless. And one in thirty youth ages thirteen to seventeen will experience homelessness each year. Our highest growing concern for us is the area of youth between sixteen and eighteen. We've seen an exponential increase in this. Um, and we are struggling to find a place for these young people to not be victimized. Um, and I'm going to just say it's, it's not pretty what we hear them telling us that they're doing to find a place to sleep. Um, at some point, I would hope that we could create such a place as that. So as you're looking at that money, maybe that's an option. Um, there are places called Hope Homes. We are willing as the Youth Connection to hopefully do something on that lines. That is in our, um, two to five year goal. Um, we are working to create a solution focused system within our whole homeless response system by taking a stand to do things that are, are a little different and trying to encourage cooperation versus blame. Um, as with our providing party with a purpose, which has changed the way outreach is happening, we are in the process of actually working more as a system than an individual programs individually. Um, one of the things I would like to encourage is all men who are able to come to our men's mental health awareness breakfast that we're hosting October twelfth at the Youth Connection to really bring awareness that, um, not only that people need to have some sort of relaxation. Um, as you're reviewing what you could do, just think about that, that might, that might be a help for that population and our homeless. Thanks so much.
And Mr. Mayor, we also have Bill Scholl, but he would like to speak after the proclamation. And there is no one on Zoom that has their hand raised, so that is it.
Right. We have one presentation this evening, a proclamation of the White Cane Awareness Day, and Miguel Gutierrez, Councilmember, is going to read that for us.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is the City of Shelton's White Cane Awareness Day proclamation. Whereas the white cane, which every blind citizen of Shelton, Washington, has the right to carry, demonstrates and symbolizes the ability to achieve a full and independent life and the capacity to work productively in competitive employment. And whereas the white cane, by allowing every blind person to move freely and safely from place to place, makes it possible for the blind to fully participate in and contribute to our society and to the lives that they want. And whereas every citizen should be aware that the law requires that motorists and cyclists exercise appropriate caution when approaching a blind person carrying a white cane. And whereas Washington state law also calls upon employers, both public and private, to be aware of and utilize the employment skills of our blind citizens by recognizing their worth as individuals and their productive capacities. And now therefore, the City of Shelton does hereby proclaim October fifteenth, twenty twenty four, as the White Cane Awareness Day in the City of Shelton should be signed on this day. August, um, first, first day of October, twenty twenty four, by Mr. Mary Nisco.
Bill, do you want to say some words?
Thank you very much for the opportunity to give you a little bit of history on the white cane. But, Mr. Mayor and council members, I appreciate your proclamation of making October fifteenth official White Cane Awareness Day in Shelton, Washington. The idea, the concept of white cane was in, uh, began in France in the early nineteen hundreds. And eventually the concept, the idea came to America. Nineteen thirty five, a Lion member in Chicago watched a streetcar blinded seat, street corner vendor maneuver across a, a busy street with a dark cane. And he thought to himself, would it not be better to paint that cane white? And so that vehicles would be able to see them better. So he took it upon himself and the club and they painted the, the vendors, uh, cane white. A few months later, the same Lions Club approached the council, the City of Chicago and got an ordinance passed that would ask motorists to become aware and give the right of way to somebody using a white cane. A little bit later, the cane after World War Two, the cane was developed with a red tip that would identify that person as a visually impaired person. That then the United, all around the United States, the, uh, different states became aware of the white cane and initiated the right of way for folks, individuals that were using white cane on any part of the road. Simply because sometimes we don't always use it across the Then in nineteen sixty four, President Lyndon Johnson declared the first blank, uh, White Cane Awareness Day. Each president since has declared October fifteenth as White Cane Awareness Day. I like to call it White Cane Safety Day. Simply because when I use this, I feel much safer. Not only walking on the streets, but and using this cane and, uh, local buildings. By the way, there are very different canes. This particular cane is called an indoor cane simply because it's shorter. I don't have to have it quite as far out and trip people with it. Then I have a longer cane I use out on the road. Now, that's the history of the white cane. But I would like to bring to your attention a grassroots movement that is happening throughout the United States and even up into Alaska. And this grassroots movement is a presentation to elementary students on how and why individuals use a white cane. The name of the, it's being, uh, presented through a book, a children's book that is called Grandpa's White Cane. This book has been presented here to all of your third grade students in the Shelton area. Well, maybe not all, uh, South Side, all of Shelton and Pioneer. I understand there are some that I have missed. Anyway. You've got, oh, you got my back. Would you, um, I would, uh, share with each one of you a paperback version of this book. And I would encourage you to share it with your children, your grandchildren, and possibly your great grandchildren. Uh, this book has gone into, uh, many other countries. And if you would like to become involved with this, uh, grassroots project, um, I would ask that you contact the city clerk and she would share my contact with my contact information. Thank you for this opportunity. And in the audience, if you would like one of these wonderful little books, please take one and share. Got it, Kathy? My homework here. She seems to know her way around this place. But I, I will sit.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
You bet. Thank you.
Right. The only item on the business agenda pertains to a bid update on water meter upgrade installations. Captain Project Aaron, Aaron Nix has details for us.
Aaron Nix, Capital Projects Manager for the city. Thank you, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Council. I can look for you, um, a project that we've been spending a lot of time and resources on, um, and something that the city has been planning on for some time now. This project has actually been going on for a couple of years, and then there's reasons why it hasn't proceeded. If these events didn't occur, this project probably would have been done already. Um, so part of the issues, um, and this is systemic wide, this is throughout the, the state. There's been a chip shortage due to COVID, um, as well as COVID itself, uh, basically put a hole on us procuring and purchasing this equipment. So, um, fortunately, we were able to get about a nine hundred thousand dollar grant that helped us purchase the council at that time, a couple of years ago, gave us the okay to proceed purchasing new meters, boxes, um, because our current ones are twenty plus years old and they need to be replaced. TOH, Department of Health, has very strict requirements with regard to ensuring that we are watching how much water we're using as well as conservation and those kinds of things. So this is an important project for us. The current meters have met their useful life, um, and they need to be replaced. This is not something very specific just to our city. I will give you some examples such as I've been in contact with the City of Bellevue, and they are replacing approximately thirty thousand water meters. Um, that is about a tenfold amount compared to what we're doing. We're only going to do about thirty two hundred. So, um, I wanted to make you aware of that. Um, today, we spent about one point eight million dollars, um, on, um, all the new meters, new boxes, new centers. Our intention with this contract is we are going to be supplying all the materials, asking the contractor to just use, um, their skills to get stuff. And so, and so that's what's, uh, moving forward, um. One point eight for all the associated hardware and the things that we need in order to proceed with this. We did have a video meeting on September eighteenth. Um, we got a wide range. I will tell you that the bidding environment is getting better. We had nine people submit bids. Um, and the range is significant. Um, it went from nine hundred and forty eight thousand dollars to two point five million dollars. Um, so I am not, uh, ready to come forward and offer, um, anything with regard to how we're going to award this or who we're going to award this to. This will come at your October fifteenth meeting. What my intent here is just to kind of educate you a little bit more about this. Again, this is something that we've been trying to get done. Unfortunately, now we can, um, procure this. I will tell you that there are several other, like I mentioned, Richland and Bellevue. I've had discussions. We kind of learned from their mistakes and include that within our specifications, um, very specific instructions to help protect the city. And our hope is to limit any changelovers or anything else. So there's any questions, please, um, please ask. Thank you.
All right. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move to place the water meter replacement project onto the action agenda of the October fifteenth, twenty twenty four council meeting for further consideration.
All right. Comments or questions?
Um, how many, how many meters have we installed over the past couple of years?
Uh, there's been about, uh, three to four hundred that we have installed, um. For this particular contract, uh, what we're asking is to install meters from three quarter inch up to two inch. We do have some bigger ones. We will deal with that a little bit later. It's a little bit different animal when you get into these bigger meters because they're in vaults and it's a lot more expensive. So we have about a hundred of those. So after we install these, we only have about a hundred left to finish the project.
I just remember two years ago, we started and we're doing it incrementally, but we got so busy and slammed and we get right out of chips and now we're just trying to finish this. So thank you very much on, thank you very much for moving forward.
Right. And again, how much of, of this was grant money?
About heck, about nine hundred thousand. Again, we've extended about one point eight and we, whatever we end up with the bid, um, about three plus million total for the project, understanding that, again, if you're Richland or Bellevue is ten times that.
Any other questions? All right. We have a motion to second to place water meter upgrade installation project bid update on October fifteenth, twenty twenty four council meeting. Action for the consideration. All in favor say aye. Aye. Vote. That motion carries. There are no action items, so we'll move on to the city manager report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. Um, I think today there might be some cleanup being done, but, uh, we have some newly paved streets, uh, up on Capitol Hill, so Folerty, um, Poplar, Fur and Otter all received some new asphalt this week in conjunction with our partnership with folks at Mason County Public Works. Um, I'll tell you, this is, this is essentially a construction project our, our public works cruises taken on to, um, create the roadbed necessary for this paving project. And these are, these are projects that aren't taken on normally by, by municipalities, especially municipalities this size. So we're quite proud of our staff and their abilities to, uh, provide this level of service to, uh, these residents up on Capitol Hill that have been living on dirt gravel roads for quite some time. We also want to recognize and pay attention that this is solely possible by the funds generated to the transportation benefit district. Um, I know we'll talk more about that here in an upcoming study session in November, uh, but it's important that, uh, that's, that's being recognized, that these projects are supported by that voter initiative, uh, that was passed back in twenty sixteen. Um, we're working on a tour after the award ceremony from Department Ecology a couple of weeks ago for our treatment plant operations. So we're working on scheduling tours for, for council. So you can go out and see the operations at the, at the treatment plants. I'll have that to you fairly soon, uh, with possible date. Last week, we had our legislative, uh, meeting. Unfortunately, only, uh, Senator McKeon was able to attend. But I think it was very productive. Um, we're formulating that legislative agenda. Um, we'll refine that as we move forward and bring that to the council in the coming weeks. So we have a complete package that we can then forward to, um, not only Senator McKeon, but, uh, Representatives, uh, Katur and Griffey as well for the upcoming legislative session in twenty twenty five. Um, as those of you that were at the, at the meeting and those of you that received the packet, uh, water infrastructure is a priority for us here in the city. It is our biggest need and that's storage, particularly storage of water, uh, to meet current code, uh, and meet the, um, the demand that we're seeing for future development. Uh, part of that future development, uh, as well, we anticipate the Olympic Heights subdivision that's just above Olympic College off Alpine Way. Um, they should be starting next week is what we're hearing from them. So there's a pre-construction meeting this week. Uh, we should see them mobilize as early as next week to start some preliminary grading and grubbing that property. So, um, we're, we've been talking about it for some time. We'll actually see some equipment moving around on that property here in the fu- near future. Um, we're continuing to have conversations with them, reviewing their civil plans for all the public infrastructure that would go in place prior to going vertical, building residential structures. So looking forward to, uh, facilitating that project. Um, the, uh, state auditor provided an entrance meeting this week. Uh, Mayor Nesko attended. It's kind of, uh, a little more than a formality, but a bit of a formality, just to introduce themselves, enter into the, the audit that is starting officially now. Uh, they will look at not only the city, but the metropolitan park district as well. Uh, they're focusing on payroll procurement and public works projects. So they'll go back and make sure that we're meeting not only our policies, but state law, best practices, uh, our self-insurance programs, which is primarily unemployment, um, Open Public Meetings Act. Again, that involves council and then, uh, our fiscal condition, our financial condition, if there's any indications of financial distress within the, within the city. And we don't anticipate to have any problems. Uh, quite proud of the regular, um, uh, positive audits that we receive, uh, due to the work by all of our staff, but led by our financial, uh, services department at the same time. So we should see a final report here in the next couple of months. Um, the good thing is with the hard work that our staff are putting in, it saves us some money. Their anticipated cost just for the city of Shelton for this audit is fifty three thousand dollars. If we have all our proverbial ducks in a row, it means it's a little less time for them spent on that audit, which means they bill us a little less. So we save a little bit of money. So we do the, we do the right work upfront, save some money on the back end. So, um, we'll have more information for you. Uh, coming up, and the last thing I have for you tonight, uh, I know I mentioned to council how we can, um, continue to offer, um, public participation through a, a virtual environment. Um, we've done some research, uh, looked at other communities, and I think we have a, a plan to bring forward, uh, to the council that would still allow the public to participate virtually, provide comment on agenda items and, and public comment with, uh, reducing some of the threats that we have, um, that we saw a couple of weeks ago. Um, what we're proposing as staff is to continue using the Zoom platform. Individuals that wanted to participate within the meeting, provide comment, would register beforehand on the city's website. We have a form, fairly simple, name, information. Uh, you would be forwarded a Zoom link uh, from the city clerk's office. That Zoom link will get you into that meeting. You would register with your name and the name you've put on that form specifically. It couldn't deviate from that or you would not be led into the Zoom meeting. Um, at that time, the agenda item would come forward. Um, you'd be recognized, you'd be unmuted, muted, muted by the clerk's office, be able to provide public comment, and then we would exit you from the meeting. Uh, you could watch the meeting beforehand and after and on the YouTube channel, city's YouTube channel, still be able to, um, be able to view the rest of the meeting. Uh, we feel this is, um, ten, you know, it continues the transparency that we want for our council meetings, continues the, uh, opportunity for, for public comment, um, from those that can't make it here. Um, we need to accommodate those individuals that can't make it here. Certainly, there's different ways to do that, but we believe this still allows that flexibility, um, to, for voices to be heard in front of the council at all times. So with, um, that, uh, we hope to institute this starting October fifteenth, the next regular council meeting, and we'll advertise this publicly and make sure that individuals have the opportunity to register online uh, and find that information before the meeting. So I'm happy to write any further context on that if any of the council members wish.
Any questions on that?
Um, this is a great, great question. It's not specifically in our protocol manual. We don't have a specific policy to that. I want to add that to our protocol manual at some point, just so we, you know, just so we make it official and have something to fall back on. But since there isn't anything here at this point, it doesn't change, uh, doesn't dramatically change, I guess, how, how that participation is being carried out. I'm comfortable moving forward if you get, if the council is comfortable at this point.
Yeah.
Any other comments? Appreciate it. City manager?
In that moment.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
That's a great idea.
We'll make sure we're flexible enough that if we, if times change, um, we'll be able to change with that in, in the future as well, be able to, uh, ensure that your business meetings aren't being interrupted unduly.
Well, thank you.
Any new, uh, for discussion? I would just like to offer our thoughts and prayers to the states and people affected by Hurricane Helene. It's been one of the most perfect storms, I believe, that we've, we've seen in our lifetimes and, uh, I just wish everybody the best over there. So. All right. Our next meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, October fifteenth, twenty twenty four, six P M. We all, also have a study session in October. Our next meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, October fifteenth, twenty twenty-four, at six P M. We also, also have a study session October eighth at six P M. This meeting is